I talked to him and then, and you're back in play. That's it.
Welcome, everybody, to the Ottawa City Commission Study Session. It's Monday, August 29th, 4:00 p.m. We'll start with any public comments. Do we have any today?
Thank you. The President is Bailey Reagan.
This is my son, Skylar.
Hello, Skylar. How are you?
Doing good.
Good.
So, the Blessing Box and our family is planning a memorial picnic, a community picnic on September 25th, which is a Sunday from 12:00 to 4:00 over at Legacy Square. We're just currently waiting on all of the department heads from the city to sign off on that paperwork, and then we'll be good to go. So, I just wanted to come and give you guys a heads up that this was our plan. We will have a band playing from 12:30 to 1:30. It's a jazz band that Joe really enjoyed. And, other than that, the Blessing Box is going to provide the meat, the buns, the drinks, silverware, plates, all that stuff. And we'll just be asking the community, if they can, to bring aside, to share, kind of like a potluck sort of thing, end of summer. And this is something that, his birthday is September 23rd, and so we are planning to do this on the Sunday nearest his birthday every year. Something he had requested was that we do more community dinners. So, with that in mind, if anyone has any questions, but we just kind of wanted to give you guys a heads up on what our plans were and let everybody know that they are invited. And it will be community-wide, including Franklin County. Anybody can come, if they come from Wichita, Idaho. We're not going to turn anybody away, but it will be for everyone in Franklin County. So.
Skylar?
Sorry.
Did you say the 24th or the 25th?
The 25th. This was on Sunday.
Do you want to add anything?
Nope. I'm just here to, in case there were any questions or anything. I'm also the Vice President of the Blessing Box. I wanted to make sure.
Now become my business partner, so.
If there's any questions?
Thank you for all you've done, and we're sorry for your loss.
Thank you. It's been, it's been tough, but I know that we can continue to honor him and his legacy. And that's what we intend to do. So, I apologize that we will not be staying for the rest of the meeting because, as a new single mom, I have lots to take care of at home, including ghosts and children who need to eat and all that other stuff.
Every, every single day they need to, right?
Yeah.
Three times a day.
Sometimes a month.
I know. I mean.
It's crazy.
We have some great reading material. We could use that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Our next public comment? Tiffany, come on up.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to remind you guys and the public that we have our September 4th celebration this weekend with the city's annual fireworks display. Of course, the display is put on by the Ottawa Chamber of Commerce and the Shetakwa Fireworks Committee. Again, we weren't able to do it in July, but we have everything ordered. Our assistants from the city will be going up Wednesday to pick up those fireworks. We'll tuck them away in a very safe, secure spot. And then, Sunday, we will start bright and early setting up for the display, and it will go off at dusk on Sunday night. I think the Facebook event says 8:13. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be, you know, pinpointing it to that time. It's just a rough estimate as what time, you know, sunset will be that evening. So, I just want to thank the city of Ottawa because there are several city employees who are volunteering their time on Sunday to help with this shoe and this week, as well as chamber members. And again, I want to thank all of the city of Ottawa, Franklin County, and all of those individuals who donated to make this year's fireworks display what it is. So, please come out and join us for some fantastic Labor Day fireworks this weekend.
Thank you. Thank you for all you did to get this to happen. We appreciate it.
Absolutely.
All right. That'll move us on to items to be placed on our regular City Commission agenda, which is the minutes from our August 17th regular meeting. Commissioner says you have a chance to read that over, and so, are we okay to move that on to our regular agenda?
Yep.
That's good. That's what we'll do. Thank you. I'll move us on to items for presentation and discussion. Item one is a review of our July monthly reports. We'll start with Commissioner Kayler.
I know that I am probably stealing the thunder of Mayor Prokets Skidmore, but I always am, am excited to read the sales tax income comparisons that we have. And it looks like there's some nice growth that we're seeing, and we certainly welcome, certainly welcome that. And I'm sure you have more elaborate things to say about it, but I just started for you. You just set the foundation, so you can add that. Also, I would encourage, I know that not necessarily individuals who may be watching this may have the reports right in front of them, but know that the reports are available on the city's website and are part of the packet. And it's a lengthy packet today, but I would encourage you to look at those reports. Those reports are not just written for city commissioners and mine. They're really written for every single citizen in mind. And so, if you want to know what's happening in our community, if you want to know what's happening within the departments in the city of Ottawa, please don't go to Facebook and post that. Please come read the reports because actually, there's actual data in here that is true and that you can count on that, that is what's happening in our community. So, I would encourage you to look at that. One thing I did want to point out, and I have the Community Development Department monthly report pulled up, which is page 18, is that this year, we have 27 new, as of July 31st, which it's almost September, so hopefully there's more than that. We have 27 new single-family houses. Permits have been issued for that, and 13 manufactured homes, which is, is great. We have received permit applications of almost 600. I'm guessing it's probably over 600 at this point. And so, we appreciate those that continue to invest in our community. My last comment is just, is on page 27, and it really is a kudos to our IT department for the great content that they've been adding to the, to all of our social media. So, I know that you've given lots of additional thought, and I appreciate it in adding all the additional comments. So, if you would pass that along to your department, please thank that. Those are my only comments for today.
Thank you. Commissioner Graves?
Well, I actually don't have any comments over the packet. It is very well done, as usual. But I am wondering if I have a couple guests in the room there, by any chance?
I believe so. We'll make them come on up here.
Okay. Yay! There they are. So, missing from the packet, as has been missing for a while, is the Ottawa Main Street Association Report, financials, all of that. And I just wanted to let you all know that we will be getting that back in there as we have hired a new director, and we have a whole new board. And so, I just wanted to, I was hoping to be there in person today, but that didn't work. So, I would like to introduce Olivia to you. She is our new director, and if she wants to tell you a bit about yourself.
Yeah. So, hi. Thank you for allowing me to come today. I am a senior over at Ottawa University. I am the editor-in-chief of the campus newspaper, if you're familiar with that. And then, I also do public relations for The Greenhouse. I got the opportunity to work with Laura and Bill this summer as well, and I loved every single second of it. And I'm just really excited to help our town grow and thrive. So, thank you for allowing me to be here, and I, I just can't wait. So, thank you.
And I know, when I had an interview with Olivia, I just knew that she was going to be the right fit. She's very energetic and excited about Ottawa and about what our Main Street can be, and that is exactly what we need. And then, Sarah Stauffer is the president of our board. And so, I was gonna maybe have her kind of give you an update on the board.
Hello. All right. So, we have a whole new board. We have Kathy Skeet, Steve Geis, Brenda Hayden, they're still on, Casey Lockard, Rhonda Morning, Riley Browning, Casey Brady, who is our Vice President, Tiffany Evans, who is our Treasurer, Diane Starsnick Dean is our Secretary, myself as President, and then Emily. So, that is our new board. We are excited to see the next steps and get everything rolling again. So, we greatly appreciate the city and Melanie and her crew helping us out. Yeah. We're ready to go.
And we definitely, we definitely appreciate the patience that everyone's had in allowing us to rebuild the organization, essentially. I know it can be frustrating, and everyone could have given up a long time ago. So, I appreciate everyone's faith, and we're gonna, we're gonna prove we've got some good things. Does anyone have any questions?
So, I'm, I'm from Denver, Colorado. Yep. Yep. So, big city.
How did you decide to come to OU?
I was on a softball scholarship of my freshman and sophomore year. And then, I just, I wasn't, I wasn't playing as much as I wanted to. And so, I needed to find a different role and what that looked like. And OU called me, and I, offered me an offer I couldn't refuse to come back to the town that I love. So, I love it. Yep. I also wanted to add that, as of right now, I will be in the office day, the Main Street office, mainly on Wednesdays and Saturdays. Those, for those two days, that will probably be my biggest chunk of time that I'm in there. I would love to meet all of you, just stop by anytime. I'm, well, not anytime, but those are the two days that as of right now, I will be in there the majority for a good chunk of time. And then, once I kind of have that schedule figured out of when everyone can get over there or what works best for everybody, I plan on posting that as well, just to say like, hey, these are the specific times that I'll be in there, so.
Olivia, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Sarah, welcome back to the board. We appreciate you coming back.
Excited.
And Commissioner Graves, thank you for the hard work that you've certainly put into reviving this board. We appreciate that for sure.
Thank you. Thank you. And that's all my, all my comments.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Commissioner Plague?
Well, Commissioner Kayler stole my thunder on the sales tax as well. So, I was gonna try to be Mayor Prokets Skidmore to that. I do have on page 22, I just wanted to call out the fire department, and EMS for their response times. I know I was really impressed to see that their, their average for calls are a minute and 17 seconds to be out the door, which I can't do that, just getting myself out the door to just even come here. And so, it's amazing to me that, you know, for, for that, they're out the door a minute, 17 seconds, and on scene in five minutes. So, I think that's amazing. I just wanted to give a shout-out kind of to them for that. And then, again, for kind of other call-outs for electrical on page 58. Just noticing how many times our electrical department is called out. I know I had one this weekend with those storms and some transformers that blew. And so, I think that's just something that's great to highlight, those extra hours. It's what, 83 hours look like in July for a lot of transformers that look like and trees hitting lines. So, just a shout-out to those crews for getting out there, probably in the middle of the night in the heat or in the middle of rain when no one else wants to. So, those are my biggest thoughts.
Thank you. Mayor Prokets Skidmore?
Well, actually, I don't have anything on sales tax, but. I'm gonna take a different slant on it, and this may kind of put some water on it. But, they're looking great all the time. And of course, a lot of this happened because of our government assistance through COVID-19 for the couple of years. But I'm afraid if we do go into recession, which a lot of people are predicting in the next year, these numbers will trend off a little bit. So, I appreciate that when our budget is conservative on those numbers, and it gets important. And just be aware that about 70% chance that they will have a recession by the end of the year, starting next year, and who knows how long or how deep or how wide or anything. But right now, just be thinking about that, that they could be trending off a little bit. But before that page, what was the page with the, there? Our Kansas Municipal Investment Pool money. I see we're getting more and more in there. I want to compliment you on the different maturities, the 30, 90, 100, 80, even that one year, just to get a good mix of maturities when they come to be repriced and keep a lot of money short-term so that we can reprice sooner. So, is Rebecca on?
Oh, no. I'm behind you.
Oh, there you go. She's on. I was looking for her. So, yeah. So, just ask your questions on what, what our current rate is, and if we had one maturity here next week or two, what they're going to price at.
Yes. I looked up the rates this morning, or this afternoon, actually. I had interviews starting this morning, and they haven't changed from last week. But, so the overnight is staying steady at 1.5%. The 30-day pool is at 1.9, which is a little bit higher than it has been. We've been trying to kind of keep some rolling at the 30-day just because it's a little bit higher, but then, if we do need it, the liquidity is still there that we have it within a month. And then, the 90 and 80 days have stayed pretty calm and even. And we're actually seeing an uptick on the, like, the long, long term, but I still don't think it would be so, it's such, it's not high enough that I would want to put a whole bunch in. But we have discussed maybe doing another year and a couple more, like, six months, so. But yeah, we did have to, we had a 30-day and then a 90-day mature in the last week, and so both of those rolled to the overnight, and then we'll reinvest them.
I had to hear in Jay Powell talk at Jackson Hole meeting. I'd love to go sometime, but I haven't been invited, so I keep waiting for that invitation. But I'll, I will say that he did indicate that it's, rates will be going higher here this fall. I think they really want to key on inflation. That's the only way to kill it, is to higher interest rates. And so, I think it's smart to, you know, stay short-term, keep liquid, and start investing as we go, and I think they will go higher. So, I think you're on a good deal going here. Can we find anything out about the Kansas State Bank 0.03 rate?
And we did meet with them, and so, we, we're gonna do a little bit of an analysis and bring it back to you. So, that rate is calculated a little different than the investments. Like, it's really easy for me to pull, like, quote you interest rates without some frame of reference. So, like, when I say the 1.5, that would be the rate if you left it in for an entire year and didn't touch it. And so, when we actually approve monthly interest, we're not getting 1.5%. We're getting that times divided by 12. And so, I want to do a little analysis to show you, you know, how, how different the rates really are, depending on, or length of investment.
Sure.
If that makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah. I see that. Very good. Thank you, Rebecca. Appreciate that. On page 17, Tiffany's here. Is she here? I want you to, but I just want to comment about the numbers, how you're keeping everything in the black. I, I know at one time, we didn't see these good numbers, and I'm just, I appreciate your creativity in keeping the programs coming and so regularly, and keeping the place full, it sounds like, and getting more activity in there. So, I just want to comment, good job on your budget, keep that going. And year over year, it seems like you're doing better and better. So, got a challenge to keep it going even higher than next year. Right? There you go. Pretty good. I know you got the energy to do it. So, good job, you and your board. Excellent. IT department, I don't mention this very often, but Paul, thanks for, you're posting the news elements up at the sidewalk.
Matt will take it.
Good job on that. The sidewalk, some different things going on around town. And just keep that up. I think it's a great thing for people to see that, know what we're spending their money on, and I think that helps us go on around. So, yeah. Keep that up. Appreciate that, Matt. And Vanessa, are you on? I think I see her. There you go. Your Meow Meow, is that, does that already happen, or is it coming up? Tell us about that.
It's coming up. Yeah. October 7th is Friday. So, starts at 5:30. You can buy tickets on our website. It's a ton of fun. Everyone needs to come. It's for a good cause, but it's also fun, as a side note.
That's great. You getting a good response so far? How's it looking right now for people coming, you know?
Yeah. Also, always very thankful to our local sponsors. We are so blessed to have so many local businesses. Really appreciate Prairie Paws. We've got some new sponsors joining us this year, and we've got some really exciting items up for auction, both live and silent auction. So, you can join the silent auction from home. But if you want to get in on these really cool live auction items, you've got to be there. But there's some new things we've never had up for auction before, so we're pretty excited.
That's great. I think you were applying for a grant here about a month or two ago. Any updates on that?
Haven't heard anything yet. I think I've applied for about six more since then. Doesn't hurt to ask, right?
Right.
So, yeah, I still haven't heard anything yet on that one, though.
Right. Good. All right. Well, good job keeping up. And again, you're in the black too, so that always looks good. So, thank you. That's all we have, Mayor.
Thank you. I don't have any questions either. I know we've got kind of a long discussion on some other things, so I'm gonna keep it short. Do it, as I ask every month, do any of the directors have anything that they would like to talk about in any of their reports?
All right. Mr. Mayor, I'm.
Yeah. Come on up.
Way to go.
Nice job.
The new guy, he don't know anybody.
Well, I just wanted, if I could, I just wanted to manage a few expectations. So, the last few months, permits for single-family homes have slowed a little bit. So, we kind of had, the number is pretty good, you know, relative to last year. A lot of that, there's a lot of activity in the spring. But I think what that indicates from the conversations I've had with, with builders is that construction costs have increased a lot. So, and that kind of leads to the next presentation and, and why the MIH program is important. So, we might not have, we might not be issuing permits at the same rate we've been issuing them in the past, in the past four to six months.
Well, it's not just your construction costs. It's, as Mike mentioned, the interest rates are going too, which is certainly slowing down the purchasing of homes also, so.
Right.
Yeah. Anything else? All right. Anybody, any other director want to, I think I commented anything about their month report? All right. And I'll move us on to item two, which is a discussion on moderate-income housing and project proposals that we have.
All right. So, if you could indulge me, I have a few slides. There's quite a bit here, so we'll try to skim over the, recover the most important topics, not skim over the most important parts of it. So, Matt, if you can advance the slides for me? Thank you. Okay. So, let me get started. Modern-income housing of the MIH program. Modern-income housing is housing that's affordable to households at 60% to 150% of area median income. Affordable means that no more than 30% of income goes to housing. And if, if you exceed that, if your share of income that goes to housing exceeds that, you're considered cost burdened. The Kansas MIH Grant Program, there are three application rounds within the next 12 months. And right now, we're looking at the first application round. The application deadline for the first round is September 30, 2022. They intend to announce awards in November. And for each round, there's $5 million in funding available. Current funding priorities, I won't list all these, but distribution of funds throughout the state. And I think the one that really applies to Ottawa is areas that have difficulty filling employment positions due to a lack of housing. As the housing study that was done a year ago indicates, and it's just experience indicates, that our lack of housing could hinder the ability for growing industry to hire, hire people, fill positions. For this program, each eligible city or county may receive up to $650,000 per application round. Each application may include multiple projects, as long as those multiple projects collectively don't exceed $650,000. Cities are being, or applicants are being advised to leverage the MIH funds with the Rural Housing Incentive District, RHID, and other city resources. And we have one RHID established currently. But we have the ability to establish other RHIDs. The idea is that if a city has RHID as a resource or other resources, that, that those resources can be used to pay for infrastructure, and that the MIH funds can go to vertical construction. Next slide, please. Okay. So, some major dates here. I won't, I won't name all of them there, but the current RFP for this current round came out on July. We sent the RFP to developers on July 22nd. We received proposals on August 11th. And in order to submit an application by the deadline, the commission has to select projects in early September. And when you select a project and authorize an application, you do that by resolution. And the application deadline is September 30. The announcement is expected in November. Next. Very good. So, the evaluation criteria, does the, we use based on the RFP, based on KHRC's RFP. Does the project help satisfy the need for workforce housing? Can the developer complete the project within 18 months of the MIH grant award? Are the plans and information sufficient for the September 2022 application? Is the return on investment acceptable? And one way to measure return on investment in this case is what's the, what's the MIH funding per unit? There might be other things you can consider as return on investment. Can the project be leveraged with other resources? KHRC and their RFP made that pretty clear, that if there's a way to leverage applications and projects, that should be done. Next slide. So, based on the criteria, the recommendation is that Prairie View Estates phased to by Ottawa MIH Partners, which consists of seven duplexes for a total of 14 units, that that be included in the application. The other two are by Hartland Design Build, and one is a new duplex at Ninth and Walnut, and the other is four new single-family homes in North Sea and East Red Jackets. And that project was started and it never really totally got finished. Conditions have changed since it was, since the other units were built. And so, the need for assistance has grown since that time. Next slide. So, I'm gonna go over the project proposals. Before I do that, I just want to make, clarify a couple things. So, we received the proposals. And on August 11th, we, we formed a review committee, and the names of the people in that review committee are in the, in the packet. The review committee met and reviewed the proposals. As a, as a result of that meeting, there were some questions, some information that was requested from, from the proposers. And they submitted that revised information. And then, we met again, went over the proposals, and, and discussed and reached consensus on a recommendation based on the criteria. There were three total proposals, but one of those proposals consists of four projects. The other, other two proposals consisted of one project each. So, there were actually six projects. So, kind of hard to read that slide, but. So, Project A, I'm gonna go over. so Project A, I'm, I'm gonna go over every project proposal. Give everyone equal time. Every project equal time, uh, so to speak. And, and so, uh, if you have questions, just, just, uh, please ask. So Project A by Heartland Design Build is a two-story townhouse-style apartment building at Ninth and Walnut. One of the units is three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath. The other is two-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath. And the rent is, as you see there, um, the project costs 372,000, 371,000. MIH funding request is 40,000. This is in a neighborhood revitalization program area. So it is very likely to be eligible for, uh, NRP and the tax rebates that go along with that. One thing I should point out too, so on all of these projects, we looked at the rent and calculated that it met those MIH, it fell within the MIH range. And typically, it was in the eighty to a hundred percent of their median income range. So it wasn't at the high end of the range. And the range, by the way, is in your packet. I can tell you which page it's on if you'd like. It's on page 79. And the proposals, by the way, the description of the proposals begins on page 92, I think.
Mike, do we know, I know this rent range, is that the, I don't know, it's almost the upper end of rentals here in town. Is that a hidden reason or is it high? What do you think?
As far as marketability, I can't tell you that. But as far as meeting the, the goals of the program, it's definitely within the range.
Okay.
Yep. It's definitely within the range. Okay, so these are floor plans. Uh, pretty small, hard to read those floor plans on the screen. But this gives you an idea of what we're looking at. Next slide. Building elevations. One thing that I think you'll note is the building is designed, it kind of looks like it could have been built in Ottawa in the 1920s, uh, almost. So it's kind of a good fit for an fill site aesthetically. Next slide. This is Project B. Uh, Project B is four detached single-family homes in North Cedar East Red Jackets Street. Two of these are three-bedroom, two-bath, two are two-bedroom, two-bath. The rents are on the screen, as you can see. Total project cost, $777,000. The MH, MIH funding request is 80,000. So 20,000 per unit, the previous proposal, the previous project was 20,000 per unit. And this is also in the neighborhood revitalization program area. Next slide. And this is a floor plan of a three-bedroom, three-bedroom unit. And the elevation. So it's a two-car garage. So next project, uh, this is Project C. So this is in Westwood Circle for single-family detached homes. These are built for sale, um, three or four-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage. The anticipated, uh, sale price is $300,000. The funding request for these is 60,000. Uh, so that's 15,000 in MIH funding for each unit. What's proposed is that the 15,000, uh, basically go as kind of like a down payment to add to that, a down payment. It doesn't replace the down payment. It adds to the down payment to, to, uh, reduce the loan amount. Next slide.
And that one is out of neighborhood revitalization, right?
That's correct. That's one's out of the neighborhood revitalization area. And there's a floor plan on the, on the building elevation. Okay, so this one is Project B by Heartland Design Build. Uh, this is a renovation of a single-family home at 115 West 11. And this involves reconfiguring kitchen and living room, adding a half-bath, rear deck, and a detached two-car garage. This is a three-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath home after it's been renovated. Uh, $1,300 a month for, for rent is expected. Uh, the MIH funding request for this is 20,000. And that's the existing house. Next slide. So this is the project proposal by Pinnacle Component System, Systems, excuse me, Randy Wildbanks and Alex Howe. Pinnacle Component Systems has a manufacturing operation on Wilson Road. They make building, uh, components, panels, trusses, things like that. The project is 32 townhouse-style apartments in four eight-unit buildings. Each unit is nine hundred and thirty-five square feet, two-bedroom, two-bath. Anticipated rent is 1,050 per month. Project cost is 6.3 million and the funding request is 650,000. And I think that works to about 20,000 per unit. Pretty the math, pretty close anyway. Um, other funding sources include a rural housing incentive district, RHID, and housing investor tax credits. So housing investor tax credits, let me just explain something on the RHID. So this is not in an existing RHID. So this project, uh, you would have to approve an RHID. And the way you do that is you approve a district. And there are different steps in the process. And at some point, you enter into a development agreement with the developer to articulate, describe how, uh, the increment is returned to the developer. The city, the city's economic development policy, uh, RHID is to be used on a pay-as-you-go basis, meaning that it's a cash flow that comes in, in, uh, subsequent years. It's not a, it's, there's no way to capitalize it in that first year. You can't, and you can't inject it as a capital, in the capital stack, so to speak. There might be a way to do it with training finance, but, uh, but generally, that's how that works. The housing investor tax credits, uh, if you're familiar with tax credits, if, if there's a tax credit offering of some kind, like the low-income housing tax credit, the way that works is, um, the, the developer, uh, sells tax credits to, to accumulate capital, to acquire capital for their project. But the, the tax credits are sold in the open market or in a marketplace. Uh, they, they're sold for a percentage on the dollar, like 85 cents on the dollar, 90 cents on the dollar. And then the, the tax credit investor can use those to offset their tax liability. So this is a, this, this, uh, housing investor tax credit, it's just coming out now. Uh, this is a state tax credit. It's not a federal tax credit. Uh, and, uh, the way this would work is if there's a project that's included in an application to this, to KHRC for the MIH money, uh, subsequent to that, the developer would apply for the tax credits. And in this first round, what the KHRC is wanting to do is only consider the tax credits for a project that's also being funded with MIH. And there are a bunch of other rules on it. Uh, and, uh, okay, so, so the project includes, in addition to MIH, the RHID, and housing tax, investor tax credits and its capital. Next slide, please. So, uh, this slide shows you the typical floor plan of these units and the elevation. If you go back, the slides before this, if you just go back, backtrack one slide, Matt, if you would, thank you. So there was not a detailed site plan submitted with this proposal. We didn't require in, when, with these proposals that someone have a detailed site plan. What we requested is, it was detailed enough that we kind of understood how it fit on the site. This, this site plan has not been really fleshed out that much, but I can tell you the site's pretty large. It does seem like it's plenty large enough to accommodate this many units, in my experience in looking at site plans. But there are some unknowns about the site planning. Uh, one thing I ought to point out as well is, is, uh, of all the properties, of all the projects, this one would require rezoning. This would require rezoning to, to R3. Right now, it's on C2. So it'd be a down zone. It's probably likely that it would get approved, but it's still, it's still a factor.
Like, are there time constraints on this project? I'm thinking that street utilities also need to be completed, and I assume before certain deadlines. I was thinking there's 18 months. What was that?
So to answer your question, uh, the goal is that, or the request is that, uh, all the projects are completed within 18 months. So if the building's completed and ready for occupancy within 18 months of the grant award, that's pretty fast turnaround. And some, some projects, it's gonna be hard for them to meet that, uh, kind of depending on the situations that they're in. This one I should point out, it, it doesn't involve public streets. So in terms of the, the site work, it's an apartment complex. It's gonna be a private drive parking lot. The next project I'll show you does involve a public street. Okay, so this is, this is the one by Ottawa MIH Partners, also known as Prairie Fire. This is phase two of a project that's already, the phase one's been built. It consists of 14 units and seven duplex buildings. It includes the construction and dedication of a public street. Ten of the units are two-bedroom, one-bath. 1350 per month for rent. Or, or the units are three-bedroom, two-bath. $1,550 per month for rent. Full project cost is pretty close to 3.3 million. The funding request is 500,000. So in the original proposal, uh, the developer, uh, requested 650,000. And MIH funds, that was kind of steep in terms of, uh, MIH money per unit. Not a huge project, especially in comparison to one previous to this. When we requested additional information, there was a conversation that was had, and they reduced their request to, to 500,000. So, uh, something to keep in mind on this one, uh, the first phase, six of the duplexes were built using MIH funding. Uh, this project, uh, was awarded the grant, or we were awarded a grant in 2017. Project was built 2018, 2019. And that grant amount was $400,000 for the six duplexes. And then the remaining duplexes, I think there are a total of seventeen duplexes. As I understand it, the remainder was all done, uh, using the low-income housing tax credits. And so this is phase two of that. So again, the funding request is 500,000. Like the previous project, uh, they proposed to use RHID money and also the housing investor tax credits. In this case, there's already an RHID formed. So the district is formed. There have to be some development agreement that would be negotiated and put together and executed for the specific project. And that would require some effort, of course, but the district's, district is already formed. Next slide. So this is a typical floor plan. Maybe, I believe this is a three-bed, two-bath unit, one-car garage. Again, 14 units and seven duplex buildings. Next slide. That's it. So in terms of the process, uh, I think, uh, some, some input would be helpful today regarding the, uh, recommendation. If there is some appetite for looking at the other project, then I think that I only bring that up because, uh, that would require the RHID be formed. And we would probably want to start looking at that if that was the case. Cause there are some steps involved in that. It seems possible that progress could be made on that, uh, if that was, uh, the desire of the commission. Uh, the next potential meeting is September 7th, which is a regular meeting. If, if you wanted to, uh, discuss this rather than making a decision, you know, then you probably need to go to another meeting in September.
Is that right?
What was that, Mike?
Well, so the next regu, the next meeting that's on the calendar, September 7th, and that's a regular meeting.
Right.
Uh, so I think a project of this magnitude probably is, is worthy of two study sessions before, before you make a decision.
I, I agree with that, commissioners, and you may even want to, um, you may even take it through. That this is a pretty important decision. Uh, we're giving you the recommendations of the group reached by consensus, and you may have a different view on it. You may want to, um, have a discussion amongst yourselves, have a invite of the developers that submitted in, answered questions that you might have. Um, I, you know, you could run this to, I, I would not advise you run it to September 26th. I think you ought to have a decision made of which projects you want to go with no later than September 19th, so you can get the resolutions on the September 21st. And we're not required to do a public hearing?
I didn't, I didn't say anything about a public hearing, but it is required.
You might want to confirm.
Resolution. And I, I neglected to say that Susan Galmore with Southeast Kansas Regional Planning Commission, our consultant, is, is in this call. If you have specific questions about how to put that application together, or how that application goes together, some of the timing questions that should come up. One thing I, I, what we've tried to do here is, is present these in an objective way. And if you look at the project that we are not recommending, our reason for not recommending it is the uncertainty associated with it and getting it done in 18 months. But in terms of meeting goals and, uh, the objective of creating workforce housing, it, it's a pretty substantial project. And there's a lot of our return on investment there in terms of MIH money and RHID. But if you consider that it requires rezoning, um, the RHID is not formed, uh, it might not be re, in, in the opinion, or the consensus, I should say, of the review committee, um, it's hard to say it's shovel-ready for that reason. If you consider that there are subsequent rounds, it could be ready for the second round, and it seems like it really could be ready. They have the project under contract. They can apply for rezoning before they close on the pro, on the project.
The land is under contract.
The land is under contract.
Correct.
I gotta admit, 32 units is very appealing. We certainly need many as quickly as possible. But I guess I'm concerned, is there a penalty if we don't get it done in 18 months? What happens then if it's half-built in 18 months and you don't want, do we know anything about that?
I, I don't think there's a penalty. Maybe Susan might have a better insight into that because she's dealt with these types of grants, or you have the application.
Yeah, hello. Um, there's not a technical penalty, uh, per se. It does go to your performance. So if you want to apply for future funding, they do look to see if you were able to complete your project on time. They also look to see how you presented it in the grant application. And if you presented it that, you know, it's a viable project and it's, if you presented that it's shovel-ready, it can be completed within 18 months. Um, and, and it doesn't happen, you, you need to be able to qualify that with some, um, reasonable explanations. Sometimes hap, things happen outside of your control and they do understand that. But in this situation, this is a very large project. They would probably look at this and go, you know, they would even potentially call you and say, we need assurances that this is, uh, shovel-ready and that this is something that can be completed in 18 months. And they might have that conversation with you. I think that, um, this, just from the grant writer's perspective, there was some current concerns that I had with this one. Um, I, I like the quantity of units because your return on investment is much better. And so that piece of it is great. Um, I would have a hard time selling this one as a shovel-ready, um, realistically. Creating the new RHID, it takes time. Rezoning takes time. They say the land purchase is under contract, um, so hopefully that would come into, hopefully that could be flushed out. But those are not great items in a grant application. But those are not great items in a grant application, to sell them that this is a shovel-ready project. That's probably the only negatives. They also needed to provide, in their proposal, there wasn't a lot of quantitative math on their budget. It was very early days for them on that, so that, that, there was a lot of, if this were to go forward, there's a lot of work we would have to do on the math in regards to the budget itself. So, the reason why I bring that up is, I know you guys are wanting time to review these, but as far as being able to put together a comprehensive grant application by September 30th, I'm hoping you guys don't wait till the very last meeting to make your decision, because that's going to make it really difficult. Especially if you're wanting to package multiple ones together, which you have the option to do. And, and I think it's definitely worth considering. So, that's just my, my two cents on that. But no, you, there's no monetary penalty if you don't get it done in 18 months. It just goes to your performance rating.
And on that performance rating, how do we know Pinnacle or any of the builders have performance ratings? Where do we find that information?
Yeah, that's a good question. That would be something that we could reach out to K H R C and find out. They will have files on all current and past projects, and we can look and see and ask, you know, if that's something that they'd be willing to share. So, I guess I should also clarify, past performance would go towards not only just the builder, but also the city that was the applicant. So, it's kind of a twofold performance. In this, on the city's piece of it, you know, you're responsible for meeting timeliness, expectations on the administrative side of things, but also to kind of help the developer move it along as well, so that it doesn't get stalled. So, you kind of get the brunt of both of that, but we can find out from them. If you have quite, if you want to know performance ratings on any of the developers, we can reach out to K H R C and see if they would share that.
Okay, as far as the timing goes, if we decided on our 21st of September, regular meeting, is that getting kind of late, do you think, or is that okay?
That's, you know, we, we will make it work if that's what you decide to do. It will be difficult, but doable.
And, and Susan's being very nice to you, and telling you that that really puts that down to a timeframe that is really kind of difficult. You, you can, I'm sure the city attorney would agree, this is a meeting, you could approve the applications at this meeting. You could call a special meeting. If it's important enough for you, that you need a special meeting to wrap this up, you can do that. But I, I probably shouldn't have offered the 19th. But Susan's exactly right, there, whatever the application is, she's helping us, helping the developer put that application together. And there are a lot of I's and T's to be crossed.
Yeah, I would agree that, I think we'd want it before the 21st, that's a fast turnaround, to cut on someone else. And if we needed to, I would be open to having a, a meeting specifically for this, if we needed to schedule something if it didn't work.
We have a study session on the 12th, we'd talk about it, and then make a special meeting on the 14th. Still, it's going to be middle, is that enough time? Susan, what do you think, of the 14th or the 12th?
Yeah, yeah, I, I like the sound of that a lot better.
So, commissioners, we keep thinking about the time, that, that they certainly need to turn this around, but what about any time that we may need to question some of the builders about their projects? I'm certain that there's probably some questions that came up along Director Hall's presentation. I mean, we're, yeah, I mean, we're, we, if we're looking at the 14th, that gives us two weeks to get somebody in here, you know, all the, all the developers in here, and I mean, two of them are sitting here. So, it seems like they're readily available, but I mean, certainly, we would probably want to question all of them. So, I know, I know, I'm just devil's advocate there, I know we need to turn it around for sure.
We need to be prepared for, to ask questions on the 12th at the very latest. I mean, I'm not opposed to doing it on the 7th, if we need to do it later on in our meeting on the 7th. If we need a special meeting, it's probably going to take more than just a conversation right here to decide that. Some complicated schedules coming up.
Yeah, there's no reason why you can't discuss this during a regular commission meeting, right?
Yeah, commissioners, under the statutes, a meeting is a meeting is a meeting. If you're together having a conversation about public business, then you're having a meeting, and they don't differentiate study sessions from regular meetings. I would say that it would be not unprecedented for you to maybe use your September 7th meeting to hear from developers. If they wanted to come in and you wanted to ask questions about the application, and then on the 12th, you could certainly discuss further amongst yourselves and make a decision. You can make this decision on which application you're going back, having work sessions in, meetings and meetings and meeting. But that would give you an evening meeting for the developers to come in on the 7th, for you to ask questions, flesh out any questions or details you needed for most proposals. And then, the 12th, you could reconvene together without the pressure of feeling like you're having to make a decision right then, and talk towards a decision if you want one, or call a special meeting if you think you have more time.
I thought, yeah, I, I know we've got a long meeting probably, this, this, depending on how the public hearings and stuff like that go, but I think, you know, I think that's a great decision to have, because then at that point, if anything comes up in the next five days or so, we can certainly, you know, get some answers on those questions that might come up the 7th. Commissioners, how do you feel about that?
I think that works, are we able to the 12th, call a special meeting for two days later, or do we need, what time in advance?
Or we could decide on the 12th.
Yeah.
Decide on the 12th, give me an, an official meeting.
The city clerk has template forms.
Yeah, I think that works, I definitely think there's discussion to be had, because it's obviously a lot of money, and some really good opportunities. And I think the due diligence was done by the committee kind of going through all the projects. I think we'd be remiss to make a decision without talking to the developers and doing our homework to them.
Yeah, I certainly wouldn't want to make a decision without having those conversations, for sure. Commissioner Grace, you have any input?
I think that sounds fine, I think, I mean, that would give us enough time to think about it and ask questions as needed, so I'm, I'm up for whatever.
Commissioners, are we okay then reaching out to the three developers and requesting that they be here on the 7th evening for a regular meeting? To have a discussion with them about?
I'll reach out to the two that are in the room. I'll take care of that.
That's my invite right now.
I've done my part.
Very, great job. Reach, if we could reach out to all of them and then request that they be here the 7th, 7th evening for some questions that they may, we may have about their potential projects. Is there any other discussion you'd like to have about this right now?
I know it's obviously early, but kind of similar to the committee's decision, I think potentially selecting a project that isn't even owned currently, we all understand real estate, things can go awry, isn't zoned properly. Those two alone are huge roadblocks that I would say are not shovel-ready. As much as I think 32 units is probably the best for workforce housing, and the per-unit price is actually really good on that, I think to me, those are really big potential roadblocks, and I don't see a reason I might not want to rezone it, and, but we obviously haven't fleshed all that out and done our due diligence.
It is a two-tiered process. If the planning commission does that, holds a public hearing, and we all know that there are a lot of things you go and do at a public hearing, and sometimes a lot of people in a room. And then they make a recommendation on that to you, so there is a timeframe in there.
But Mike, on that project too, I mean, the second round is coming up later in the fall, right, or in the first year, so maybe that project will be better suited for that round, if they're not quite ready now.
Yeah, application deadline for that second round is probably going to be January.
Susan, are you going to be available to help us on the 7th, if we have any questions?
You bet.
Okay.
I think it's fair to alert those that are being asked to come in to have questions, that we do have a public hearing that night for, for the budget. So, we most likely will not get to it, maybe even until 7:30 or after.
Yeah, 8:00.
Maybe a lady.
I'm being kind.
Maybe a lady. Certainly.
You don't have to get there at 6:59.
Certainly valuable information that we, we, we need to, for sure.
Mike, would you be the one to get the information about that R H I D zone? What work would go into that, the timeframe in fact?
Yes. Yeah, I can, I can provide that, yeah. Yeah, there are several steps in the process, but, yeah. And we're prepared to take those steps. One of the key parts of that is a housing needs assessment, and that's a little over a year old, which is within proper timeframe, and actually Paul, Paul's here. Paul has put together a supplement and update to that, which will be really helpful.
Commissioners, any other questions right now on the M.I.H. item? All right, thank you Director Hall.
Thank you.
I don't know, let's move on to item 3, which is our continued review of our 2023 operating budget. Come on up, Director Landis.
Thank you. Well, so, we don't have the same PowerPoint that we presented to you at the last several meetings, but we, unless Matt can find it. But we do have basically the same information, and so what I would start by saying, I could get into the scrambled position. Start by saying is that we haven't changed anything since the last couple of times that we've talked to you. If you want changes made to the information that's presented, or, and we will present it maybe a little different light for your public hearing. Brina was going to cover some of the highlights of the budget as we presented it to you over time. If you want to kind of review that information, we can do that this evening. If you don't want to, or if we're not able to find the PowerPoint, we won't. It was in the packet, so if you have that, we can at least go through those slides, or talk through each of those, or at least the high points. Also, this is your opportunity to let us know if there's something that you want to see changed, if there's something you want more information on, so that we can bring more information to you at the 7th, which is the public hearing. So, looks like Matt found it. So, if we, we're going to go over the, through the PowerPoint, you just kind of hit the high points, and Brina has offered to do that, and I'll jump in if you have questions.
Next time, next time.
Yes. This is our assessed valuation, it's what really drives our mill rate. One mill rate is determined by what our assessed valuation is. As you can see, the 2022 valuation is up 10.67%. This is just going over our historical mill rate, and what the trends have been, and over time, we've kept either a stable or declining mill rate. And then this is our published budget notice, which was put out on August 20th. And just to go over the requirements, it had to be published 10 days before the public hearing, which is going to be on September 7th. And it was supposed to be posted on our website, and we also posted on our social media as well. And this is just our library fund, which is also a property tax fund, and their proposed bill rate is going down for this year, actually. Just running through them. And then, this is our auditorium fund, it is also a property tax fund, and the proposed is a level mill rate for this year. And the same for our debt service fund, and we're posted at a level mill rate as well.
You got a question on the debt service fund, so for 2023, is there any new debt service, is that what the?
Yes, so that, that amount that's shown there as the, the reserve for future debt, that would be to be available for the payments on the new 2022 A bond issue, which would have payments due in 2023. So, that's assuming that we're, we're moving ahead with those city facility projects, and so it would cover that, the property tax funded portion of that bond issue.
Okay, so the payments aren't due until 23?
Yeah, so we should, likely if we close on that bond issue in the fall of '22, we would have an interest payment in the spring of '23, and a principal and interest payment in the fall of '23. Now, of course, that's not an exact amount, because we don't know exactly where we're going to land, so the way that that has been plugged in there is to make that is an amount that's equal to keeping that as, at an estimated level mill rate. So, technically, it could be less than that, we wouldn't want that payment to be anything more than that. We want to make sure that that fund is capable of making those payments. And then, the same with our general fund, it, it was posted at a level mill rate as well. Actually, I might make a note here, so the general fund, overall, the general fund would be, would actually show a slight increase in the mill rate, because we were targeting a level mill rate overall. So, the estimated mill rate would be at about half a mil over last year at that published bottom line. So, we, when we published this, we were publishing a level 45.968, and because one of the funds went down slightly, that gave a little more flexibility in the general fund, so it did go up slightly. Does that make sense to everyone?
Can't read against dark. 64,000, 62,000?
Yes.
That's unallocated, okay.
Well, I called it unallocated in there, but really, that is the amount that we were setting aside for the Aquatic Center project, to get that, that whole project moving, whether it's eventual getting started on design, whether it's a community participation and outreach, anything that you might see fit to move that project along. Any more questions there? Okay, this was the original request and the budget impact to the general fund. And these are the items that we're recommending as being included in that general fund number that you see on those other pages.
So, the budget impact is the recommendation?
The budget impact is the amount of each one of those requests that would actually impact next year's budget. So, for example, it's a full amount for, actually, everything that's on there is the full amount. These are the ones that, so say, for example, if we were going to lease purchase something, we've made a revised impact analysis on the next slide. So these were the ones that these were originally how they were presented to you, and these are how they're in the budget. So basically, there's no difference from how it was originally presented to you.
Okay, so the community police officer benefits, 113,000. So I guess we went back and forth on that, but tell me about that.
The community.
I'd be adding another officer.
Yes, so so currently.
It would just be continuing the current program for one more year because the grant was for one for 12 months.
Yeah.
But because we were delayed hiring that, we've actually pushed the grant period into 2023. And we didn't know about that until we had already done a lot of those other grant works. We asked to continue the program as is for 2023, fully funded, so that we can then go back in 2024 and ask community partners to help participate a little bit in paying for the crisis co-responder.
So the grant would offset some of those expenses we're looking at here?
Not really. It's going to carry over into '23, so we'll end up spending a little bit less matching funds this year out of city budget, but it's going to carry over into 2023. Now, because we were awarded the grant extension through the first quarter of '23.
Okay.
So that is the position that coordinates with the crisis co-responder. So you asked about the community police officer. That position is the officer that is with the crisis co-responder when they respond, correct?
The community police officer is, yes.
So they go together.
Mm-hmm. And then on our salaries, I think we were talking about pushing that up, aren't we? And while I say that, it's kind of a hard thing to say, you know, we put ourselves at risk. I don't ever like doing that. But a lot of people think we may work six hours a month here, you know, just needings, and that's it. That's all they visibly see maybe as doing. But we all know, and going through the materials here like this last weekend and every weekend, sometimes we spend three or four times that amount of time here doing commissioner work. So I could see recommending the 18,000 for the annual salary increase for government body. How do we have the other commissioners feel?
I'm sorry, just to just to be clear, that's the additional 9,000. So the current budget is 9,000. This reflects the additional 9,000. So these are in additions to what's currently in the budget. So the total proposed would be 18,000.
Would be 18,000, okay, I guess I missed it. Okay, guys. Never mind. I'm not saying 36,000.
Do you have other questions on this slide?
This is our deferred operating budget requests.
Yeah, so the request column is what you originally saw from your department heads. The revised impact shows the actual amount that's been included in the budget. Everything else with the comments off to the side are changes that we've made in order to either be able to accomplish those things or delayed or deferred to another year. Or for instance, and we've talked about this before, but I think it's important to to say again that on some of these items, maybe they came in with a, like, say, for instance, the fire department came in with a request for $1,000 to repurpose the brush truck. But in they were able to go back and find a new, different way to accomplish that same thing. And so the impact is actually going to be brushed it down to 45,000 as opposed to the 100,000. And you'll find that in a couple of other options as well. And then also, or items. And then also, we did go back through and kind of scrub the requests. And so some of them were duplicates of the current year. And the reason the reasons for being duplicated were very valid, mostly because we have our difficult time getting vehicles and equipment this year. But in most case, almost every case, we'll be able to make sure that that money is set aside so that they can get those vehicles and equipment when they're available as opposed to including a duplicate budget for next year. Any other questions on this slide? No.
And this is beginning and end balances for all of our special fund revenues. So that would be in balance with our beginning balance of 2023.
The beginning fund balance is what, January 1st, 2023?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, the beginning fund balance is what you said? I might have misunderstood. Beginning balance on this slide is January 1, 2023. So this is what's being budgeted for '23. Beginning fund balance plus your revenues minus your expenses and where we plant it, where we expect that you'll end 2023. So these were included on the notice. So on your one slide, you don't see all of the additional special revenue funds, but these are the other, this is the rest of the information that was on the notice.
And then the same for our enterprise funds. And that's all we have, just going over the budget schedule again. Now, all we have left is the September 7th meeting at 7:00 PM for the public hearing for the revenue neutral rate.
Did you have anything on the, I know there's the note, the asterisk on the water for the ending fund balance? Because I know our expenditures are part of it higher than our revenues, so that's lower. Do we have anything on that?
No, so the when we initially went through and forecasted our revenues and expenses for this year is how we came up with our beginning fund balance. And then they estimated, they planned out their projects for '23. When we plan those out, those expenditures are much higher than the revenues, and it does deplete that fund balance. That doesn't make any of us feel really great about the operations in that fund. So we do want to have further conversation with you as a commission about the current rate structure, and we also want to have more conversations internally about how we can reorganize some of those projects and or finance some of those projects and or be a little creative on how we can still get those done. The important part here is that we're budgeting for revenues and expenses. Basically, your expenditures are your expense cap when you budget for them. We can always come back and do an amended budget later next year. But the way that those projects are planned right now, there probably shouldn't be a need for those expenditures to go over, but definitely our revenues will change and and we might be able to bring those expenditures down some. But it's in there with the asterisks to say, we definitely have to have more conversation about these utility funds. Each of them have a challenge at this time. And so this is where we're expecting that they might land if everything here were to actually happen. But we do have to have more conversations about them. Thank you. Anything else? No, I appreciate everyone's patience and and the time spent on this. I know we've covered it multiple times, and we appreciate the questions. We want to make sure that we're presenting information that's understandable. We'll probably have a couple of more slides more related to for the public hearing more related to the impact to the public, you know, for you to kind of consider. And then you will be asked to decide whether you want to adopt the budget on the evening of September 7th or if you want to push that out to the second meeting. But at any rate, we do have to have this certified by October 1 to the county. So those are your only two options for adoption of the budget. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll move us on to item four, which is comments by our city manager.
Hey. Yeah, Director Thark will be up here with us. I thought I'd do what I recommend the director is doing. When I ask a question, they kind of sit here at this place. All right, the first thing is you have a copy of a draft notice of sale for the lots on Elm Street. Worked out. So this is how you want to do it? Do you want any changes? Page 169. The last page, almost.
It appears as though it's a sale that you want to sell those lots together. Perhaps we're taking one one bid for two parcels? Am I wrong? I could definitely be wrong. So we're taking.
Well, yeah, it says, I'm sorry, it says sold as a group, but we can clarify that if you want to take separate bids on.
Yeah, down below it says lots will be sold as one unit.
Yeah.
You want two different parcels.
We can change that, so we're not offering anything yet because you haven't approved this. That's why we bring this to you.
Yeah, it certainly interests in selling separate.
For that, describing a plan for development, you know, similarly, do we have anything? Does that basically similar to what we did for the Lakeside Lots?
No. We did not. Although that was a part of the process. I don't, you don't have to ask that question, but I I think you ought to. It's not always necessarily about the lowest bid. I think in this day and age, when you're trying to bring housing to the community, I think it is legitimate for you to make your evaluation on what's going to be developed there and when it's going to be developed. That's my recommendation to you.
Just back up a little bit, so we're selling this one unit, right? Did you say two?
Two, no.
We're selling those two.
Yeah.
And that's why I'm kind of thinking it could be somebody really wants one and then doesn't want both. I suppose we could give two different bids on properties or property between us kind of. Yeah. I'd be fine if I could say two different.
Well, I think being separate, you know, with something in the middle would be more likely that somebody would only want one. Maybe they could build on the north lot or the south lot, whereas if they were a joint, then they might be more interested in one one lot. But either way, they have the ability to bid on one or both.
I would agree. I think that works.
And then how do we advertise or publish on this?
We would publish on our social media and take an obligatory ad out in the auto heralds. Maybe put it on COFO as well. But only at Milton Redd.
Okay, all right.
Just like what is listed here in the notice of sale, I mean, we have the right to not take any bid. If somebody wants to come in and offer $34 for both lots, we don't have to offer, we don't have to accept a bid for $34 or $3,400 or Estevia.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I guess. I guess I am confused because at the top it says on Thursday, September 22nd, 10:00 AM, we'll open the bids. But then it says the sealed bid is due on November 2nd.
I did not proofread this in its entirety.
I made a mistake last week. I was double checking my reading.
But this is, but actually, this is not a mistake. I put this in here to make sure that you're ready.
So so are we are we changing the top to November 2nd?
I know they're going back to 2021.
Yeah.
If you're okay with that.
Yes.
We knew that.
Oh, wow, they were doing a long time ago.
Not go back.
So when are we, I guess, when are we suggesting we're just sticking with the Thursday, September 22nd?
No, we're not. That's just in there as a suggestion.
Okay.
You need to tell me what you want.
I think that's less than 30 days.
Yeah, I find pushing that out a little bit if we need to. I don't think there's any, I mean, it's on a fire sale, so.
About September 30th, the end of the month. Gives them another week. I mean, that's 30 days roughly from now. Plenty of time to advertise, get gets back.
I think the interested parties will know that we're putting this out and give you a proposal.
What time?
September 30th, is that what I heard?
Is that for the opening or for sealed bid?
That is when it would, that is when it would come back. And at 10:00 AM that morning, the city clerk will open those bids publicly on Facebook.
14 to 30 days, is what it is.
Do you have any problems? Do you think you have any problems kind of getting it out there, getting it advertised or anything?
No.
I mean, we're roughly 30 days from today, but that means I'm certain you're not going to run up to the office and advertise it, so it'll take a few days to get that out, so.
As soon as I get this redrafted and you take a final look at it informally, the first place it'll go is on our social media, so it kind of gives a different topic of discussion.
So if we go October 3rd, that's a Monday?
Yeah, it's my brother's birthday, so I don't.
That's that's why I hesitated not to suggest it at first.
I know. I really think your time, I think October 3rd, I think that's fine. I think we'll be able to get this out there sufficiently that people know that this is up for sale.
Let's do that. Commissioner, would you be okay with October 3rd? Yep, Monday, October 3rd, end of business at 5:00 PM? Or you want the 10:00 AM if you're opening it then?
I would do 10:00 AM so we can open up that day.
Yep, so yeah, Monday, October 3rd, 10:00 AM. Do then and open.
We'll get this cleaned up, get it out. Anything else on this?
Well, I think Lakeside was due at 10:00, maybe it was.
So you might be thinking that there are utilities down there at those sides, right?
I would assume so, but I have not looked into that.
Well, they are the, so I looked at them, I looked at them last time, Dennis told me that. But the utilities are there. What what you may have is on Elm Street, how do you want to do? Just be thinking about when that question comes up. Do you want to improve that to the regular standard? Do you want the developer to do that? Do you want to chip and seal that? There is a possibility that whoever takes those lots could do an RHID in there. Possibility. And I don't know, Mike, do you know if this is in the revitalization area? So there's just some, just some, just some things you need to think about as we go through this process.
This one's over here on First Street. Yes, there are utilities here.
Okay.
Is that it? All right, that's it, okay. And by the way, I have, I have four things, I have three more things.
It's not on the agenda.
All right, let's talk about sidewalk repairs a moment. Director Thark is going to review with you what the what the program is, what we've come up with. And I would just tell you this, this comes out of a long, long discussion, probably as many years as I've been here. How do we get sidewalks repaired? And this is for the repair of sidewalks. The whole issue about building new sidewalks is a whole different process. But this is how do we, how do we actually get a handle on and repair projects? And as most of you know, even when we have a program, we're not going to make a big difference, right? even when we have a program, we're not going to make a big difference right off the bat. It will take years to get fixed what needs to be fixed, but we have to start somewhere. So Dennis and I had discussions about how to do this, and I would tell you that the statute technically says that the property owner is responsible for the sidewalk maintenance, all right? Now, we, we can have a discussion about why and everything, but truth of the matter is, the problem that you face is no different than any other community I've been in or any other community in this state when it comes to repairing sidewalks. I want you to think about this. You have a sidewalk built in your house. Your house is built in nineteen sixty-five and you have a house in front of it. Chances are, by the time that sidewalk needs to repair, you are three property owners down the road. And I almost guarantee you, maintenance of the sidewalk doesn't necessarily come up when you're purchasing the house. Very seldom has it come up in the four houses that I've bought over the years. Statute does say there's a responsibility. We've had a sidewalk program, we tried to participate in that, and I would not say that we've had a glowing success for it. You can go in and you can special assess, you can go through a process, you can special assess the repairs. You can send a letter to the property owner saying, hey, you're responsible for this. You need to get it repaired, you can do that. But I would tell you that this is really a community problem at this point in our community. It's taken a lot of years to get here. There are a lot of people out there that walk now, I walk a lot of sidewalks and, and there are some significant repairs that would be made. I think what is fair, and obviously my, uh, my disclaimer on this is I'm not the lawyer, the lawyer's over there. And what I would tell you that I think it is fair to say, we are going to start making an investment in fixing the sidewalks and somehow let the property owner know from here on out, these are your responsibility. That's one thing you can consider. But the whole purpose of what Dennis is going to talk to you about is so we can get a handle on what it would cost, what it will cost to have somebody repair those sidewalks for us and start somewhere to start making those repairs for safer sidewalks. There you go.
I'm not really sure what to add to that. We have a process, like, like it was mentioned before, we tried to participate. We were paying for, we were paying for the materials, for the concrete. The property owner was paying for the labor, it didn't work. You know, there were a few that took advantage of that, very few. So a decision was made to put a dollar amount in the budget to start repairing sidewalks. Well, the key here is repairing all the sidewalks in town that need repaired. It won't happen in my lifetime, quite honestly. And with the amount of money that we budgeted and with the availability of contractors to do the work, I'm not even sure that we can use the money that was budgeted. So that said, we're going to get a certain amount of sidewalk done every year. That was the decision that was made. And so I charge staff with, where do we start? What makes sense? They went out and, and chose some addresses. Now, let me, let me clarify that a little bit. They picked some addresses, and it's a long list, I'm sure you've seen it, and just scratches the surface. But when we get to an address, we won't just do what's in front of that house. If the whole block needs to be done, we'll do the whole block. And, and so we'll do areas as we go. And that said, it, it, it's going to take a long, long time to, to get, to get done what needs to be done. Everybody wants to be first, okay? Yeah, I, I would like to be first at everything that happens for me, too. It, it just doesn't work that way, you know, and so again, we're going to try to get something done. This is getting it off, we've never done this before. This is, will be the first year that we've attempted to try to get some sidewalks done. Did we do it perfect? Is it going to be perfect? Probably not. But we will adapt as we go along. Can we put people on a list? No, we've got to just go in a, in a process. Everybody wants to be on that list at that point in time. And I don't think you want to choose, and I know I don't want to choose from the names that are on that list. We have just got to continue a process of repairing sidewalks. That said, I would try to answer any questions. I, you know, I feel like we, we did what we needed to do to get RFPs back. So far, we've had two, we expect one more. And, you know, we're going to see how that works at that point in time. These contractors, I should probably speak to that. Most of these, all of these contractors are busy. Everybody is busy, and so this is going to become fill-in work for a contractor that, that picks this up. And so we'll see how much we get done, you know, I, again. It, it remains to be seen how this is going to fall together.
I don't know, we have a second, how we'll get started, we got to start somebody somewhere, so is it drawn out of a hat or just kind of?
It was not really drawn out of a hat. The guys spent some time with this and took a look and said, these are what we believe are the worst sidewalks in town. And so let's start with kind of the worst. Now, that, that is all relative. I mean, somebody that calls me on the phone is going to tell me that that was not the worst sidewalks in town. I've got the worst sidewalks in town. And I'm going to hear it, I'm absolutely going to hear it. I, and I'm not going to debate it because there are a lot of bad sidewalks in town. We've got to start someplace, you know, and if we, if we let that deter us, then we won't get anything done.
I, I would just want to make a comment on earlier. The program that's been in place, I have never heard of until this year. I would say, as a homeowner here in town, and this is kind of goes to the community relations director or whatever, I think we can do a better job at getting that information out. I don't know if that's a flyer in utility bills. I've talked to probably fifteen people in the past six months since I learned about it, and they've never heard of it. I've talked to other contractors who've never heard of it. And I don't know if that's a short, you know, we just didn't get the information out or it's available on the website or how we do that, because I'm not a communications and marketing advertising person. But I know you said it wasn't utilized very much. From the people I have spoken to, I think there's interest, people just don't know. And it may not obviously be to the extent that we really need to get all the way through town.
And we can certainly make another run at that.
Yeah, and I would definitely think if we could try to advertise that out to people who say mine are terrible, give them an option to say, here's this program. I think it would be a really positive thing we could do.
I, I think we can keep both programs in place, I absolutely do. You know, if somebody doesn't want to be in line, so to speak, to get theirs done, there's no reason that we can't continue that other piece. I, I totally agree with that. And then there's absolutely no reason that we can't do that. That program is still in place, we haven't done away with it. Now, has it been advertised? You're, honestly, you're probably talking to the wrong person here.
Yeah.
You know, as far as what's been done, as far as, you know, pushing the program. But, and maybe, you know, our city manager can speak to that, but I certainly don't have a problem with trying to do some more advertising or, or letting people know. Absolutely, absolutely. You know, and I think we keep both programs in place. We continue to try to replace some sidewalks also.
So to repair the sidewalks that are on that list, are we exhausting the monies that are in that program?
It would if it got it done, but this is re-budgeted every year.
Yeah.
What I don't want to do is I don't want to exhaust all the monies in there, and if somebody does want to utilize that program, there's nothing there.
Part of money.
So.
So. It's a, it's a separate fund.
It's part of the special highway. The sidewalk monies are in the special highway.
Okay, but we had money budgeted to repair sidewalks. We also have money budgeted to pay for materials for people to do their sidewalks.
You're correct. Both of those, I'm sorry, I'm only talking louder because I'm not at the table, but both of those line items live in the special highway fund. And so they are subject to the budgeted dollars or the amount of revenue each year that comes in there. Largely focused are coming in from that federal funds exchange dollars that come in and your fuel tax dollars that come in to the special highway fund, too. So we do, we do kind of prioritize those in their own line items, but they are subject to those dollars being available every year.
Yes.
So we could exhaust all the monies there if somebody wanted to, could, if we spent all that on reprising.
Any, any year time, certainly we could, but we are also, because we have money coming in, we're going to replenish that every year also.
Sure. Yes, to the best of our ability, based on the number of street repairs that need to be done as well. It's all the same pot of funds.
Yeah, 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 and that's a, that's a priority thing that happens right here in this state.
So I would tell you that if you're interested in pursuing the cost sharing program, that's what we ought to do. I would not try and run both programs at the same time. If we're going to go fix the sidewalks, we ought to fix them. If we're going to go do the cost sharing program and you want to give that another run at it, we ought to do that. But it doesn't hurt to find out what it would cost to have a private contractor come in and fix those sidewalks.
Can we, can we separate, can we allocate a certain amount, amount to possible when folks wanting to, to utilize that program as, as Commissioner Clayton said? You know, he didn't know about it till recently and have spoken to more, you know, individuals. And now that, so, so the more people hear about it, the more they want to utilize it, might want to utilize it.
The other thing you can do, hopefully you get some good prices on repairing sidewalks. It may be possible that we do the hybrid. We, uh, you have a contractor go repair the sidewalks and we have an agreement with the property owner that they're responsible for X percentage of that.
Is that the two lines we have in here, the sidewalk program for residents, that's sixty thousand, sidewalk program in the city for fifteen? Is that what you're talking about, the two lines?
Exactly right, yes.
Yep. So I, I would see what the contractor gives us a price on doing those repairs. And it may be that we can talk to the contractor and they would do those repair. You could, like I say, you could do a hybrid where, um, property owner still paid a portion of that, if that's how you want to go.
That's paid as a tax assessment, right? They don't pay, that's paid as a tax assessment, they don't pay that much.
Well, no, not necessarily. And that's a legal question that, I'm a city attorney. It, it may be possible to do that, but.
I think, I think, I think we're getting into two different things here, and I think we're running into a problem, quite honestly.
We are.
You know, because if we tell people that we're going to make them pay for it, somebody going to say, it's going to happen.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not at all suggesting that. What I'm suggesting is if somebody still wants to utilize that program, you know, for a project that they're doing, it has nothing to do with the sidewalk replacement. I just don't want to exhaust those funds where if somebody were to reach out and try to, try to, you know, grab some of those monies for their project.
And Mayor, we have control over that.
Okay.
You know, we know what kind of money is being spent. We're, we're working with the contractors as we go along, so we have control on making sure, one, that that line item doesn't get busted, and, and two, if we see that we have, you know, for some reason, out of that sixty thousand or fifty thousand dollars, we only want to spend thirty or forty, we certainly have control over that.
We just don't want to advertise the program and then run out of money for it.
And the contractors, they bid that per linear foot based on our specifications on the sidewalk?
Per square foot is the way that, that we put it out, yes. Yes, we, we didn't see any other good way to, to have them come back, you know, and that's, that's for the removal of the old and then replacement of the, and, and new.
And plan following the same footprint, anything like that? We'll be doing.
Same footprint that exists.
If they're replacing a sidewalk to a curb and it doesn't have a handicap, would that be replacing that with an approach essentially?
That's a city's problem.
Right away?
Oh, no, I guess if we're, I live on the corner, we're doing it to the road.
That's our responsibility.
That's the priority anyway, it's ours.
We pick up the intersections and do that, we don't, that's a city large responsibility.
Would that be done like at this time? I don't know if any of them on the list are.
We would make every attempt, yes, to get that done at that time. City manager has always pushed us to, to make sure that, that the handicap piece, you know, happens at those intersections. And whenever anybody's doing work, quite honestly, we try to go in with them or behind them and, and do that kind of work.
If I just, sorry. I, I had a similar concern to Mayor Crowley. But knowing that we could still have both of those pots there for people to use, my thoughts are, if people find out we're going to eventually be replacing sidewalks in town, they're not going to want to pay their money to replace them. But I do think there would be the individual who would maybe be looking at selling their house or something and view, you know, maybe their sidewalk, you know, they want to replace their sidewalk and they would like assistance from the city on that. So I do think, you know, I do think that both the programs are valuable and we should definitely advertise both.
And honestly, I think we can manage both programs. It just becomes the, the homeowners or the property owners' choice at that point in time. Do they want to wait five years, ten years, whatever it might take for us to get to them, or do they want to get it done?
I think we're developing some scenarios for a problem that we don't yet have. And I'm not sure that we're going to have. You know, after the announcement came out about the sidewalks, my brother called me, who lives in Colorado, to remind me that my dad, when I was in high school, participated in this program. This program has been around a long time. I didn't graduate from high school last year nor last decade. And so I'm not sure that it's a problem. What a great problem if we have this come about and that we have an issue. But I am willing to, much like Director Thark had indicated, if we don't start somewhere, we're never going to get it done. And I know City Manager Neinstedt has really wanted to have sidewalks as a priority, too. I absolutely agree. I think we just have to start chipping away at it, just get it done and start it. I like the opportunity of saying to, to residents, if you're not ready, if you don't want to wait and you have capacity to advance your sidewalk and you don't want to wait for your sidewalk to come up, then here's another option. If not, we will get to you. So I, I embrace that option.
Yeah, and this is really an administrative thing that we're talking about here, and I think that can be managed by us. We, we don't have the personnel to do the work, so all of this we're talking about is going to be done by contractors outside our personnel. And then so it becomes more of an administrative thing that I really truly believe we can handle.
This is next year's budget item?
This is this year.
So it's, so it can start right close. Okay, so when you decide the, the addresses that you're going to, that's going to be done, how will people know? And here's the reason I ask that, is because let's say you, I just throw out an address. Let's say four nineteen is getting done, but four seventeen wants maybe to pay, you know, to do that. And it's just easier for, you know, them to reach out to, if we could reach out to the contractor to have them do that. I know they're cheaper if they're there and, and extend. So what I'm, what I'm asking is, will those addresses be notified? Will they be, you know, posted somewhere?
When, when we get ready to start, we will take a look at wherever we're going to start. I would say that if four seventeen needed done next to four nineteen, then we're probably doing the whole block anyway. And so, you know, really no reason for them to, to pay at that point in time. And, and so I, you know, I, I'm kind of like Sarah, let's don't create Sarah in scenarios that don't exist yet. And I guess I would ask for a little bit of trust in, in, in our ability. We're going to make mistakes, I've already said that, but, but I, I think that we have the ability to, to, to deal with what we're talking about.
It's not that I don't trust public works at all. It's, it's what I don't want to do is for somebody who might not, who might not think four seventeen. It's, it's, what I don't want to do is for somebody who might not, who might not think 417, we may think it's okay, but they might not. But if they could utilize that contractor while they're there, you know, to, to replace theirs.
And we'll work that out if that's the case. We will absolutely take care of that.
And I know specifically today, I had someone ask me, because their next door neighbor is on the list, and they are not.
There, you know, I asked if people, we put specific, and that was probably a mistake on our part. Because when we get to an address and you see three or four houses both ways really need to be done, they're going to get it done at that point in time. It would just make sense. We're there, you know? And so, I hope at least, common sense plays into what we're doing here.
So if there's four houses on the 300 block of Elm, you're essentially saying we're almost doing the whole block if it needs it.
Could very well happen at that point in time, yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah, the, the, the list was illustrative of the issues we had. My guess is, we do a block, we're done for the year. I think you have to understand, we'll see how things come in. But building sidewalk, cutting curb and gutter is expensive.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, we, we're yet to see how much costs do come in.
But if we get one block done this year, that's one block less we have to worry about next year.
And I think on that setting stuff out is almost setting that expectation. I think if we tell people, we're trying to get to you. This isn't the end-all-be-all this that we're doing and stopping. I think if we tell people, here's some addresses, I think people will understand a little bit better. It's from the feedback I've got, that a lot of people are upset, based on the list we've published. The specific addresses have been the biggest thing that I've heard from you.
And that may, like I said, that, that may have been a mistake on our part. Next time, we'll do it differently, likely, you know, just because of the feedback. Again, this is the first time, we've got feedback, maybe we roll a little different next time, you know?
Yeah, next, next time, we probably just ought to, yeah, there's different what we can do.
Either way, it's good that they're being done now.
Absolutely. And I think that's where our focus has got to be. There's been so much focus on, somebody's getting something I'm not, instead of, we're actually getting something done that hasn't been done before.
As, as we get those, as Dennis gets those proposals in, and he puts together a more concrete program for you, we'll bring this back to you.
See what you did there.
That's unintended there.
Definitely end of this time.
Hey, don't laugh. Come on, don't laugh.
Three minutes, we're here.
On that, on that.
Preferably.
Can we direct people to you? If someone asks me on, how do I do it, do I single Public Works website? How do I direct them to the program?
I also bet that IT could work on some kind of infographic poll app, too.
If they, if they call 2293600, there is a link to Public Works. I mean, the main number, if they call the main number, there's a link to Public Works. They're going to talk to my administrative assistant that will start the ball rolling on, on the process of cost share. The other process is completely different, and them calling anybody is likely not to do them any good whatsoever.
I think they're both beneficial, and are going to work wonders for our community. We appreciate it, for sure.
Thank you. And on our 13th to 15th project, there will be four blocks of sidewalk repaired in that project. So, alright, we have two more things, maybe one, depending upon how you count them. Just to let you know, on our ARPA projects, I have authorized Ottawa Memorial Auditorium sign each RFP to go out. And I have authorized the RFP on the fire station location study to go out.
And we're working on the other two.
She's working on the other two.
Thank you.
That's it, Commissioner.
That was two?
Yeah. No, that's, no, that was four.
Alright. I move this on to Commissar, City Commissioners, Commissioner Kayler.
Airport Day was a huge success. I know that somebody's probably going to talk about that, but just wanted to note that. There is no reason for any citizen not to have something to do. We kicked off OHS athletic season, OU athletic season, there's fireworks on Sunday. It's a good time to be in our community, and so I'd encourage individuals to get out and celebrate being in Ottawa.
Commissioner Gray?
I have no comment.
Commissioner Clayton?
I've had a few people reach out to me, kind of regarding a business that is closing soon. It's not in the city limits, but kind of asking that we take a look at the 30% food sales for public places that serve malt beverages and alcohol. The ordinance was passed in 1994. And basically what I'm asking is to give power to Blaine, or the county attorney, to, not city, oh, city attorney, to get more information regarding the ordinance that was passed and its effect on Ottawa, and if that's something we would like to revisit.
So it's Ottawa ordinance, but the facility you're talking about is not in Ottawa?
No, I believe it's a Franklin County ordinance that Franklin County works out.
But you do have at least one in the community that that rule affects, right?
Commissioner, the, the state allowed for the change back in, I think, 1994. The county put it up to a vote and approved the 30% requirement countywide. I'd have to do research for you on what it would take for the city to opt out of that 30% food requirement, if it could, within city limits. But I think that's the question. We pass an ordinance, we, the city passed an ordinance shortly after the county resolution in 1994 to allow different liquor-by-the-drink establishments in the community. And so we need to take a look at what we can do, since the county's resolution is still in place on the food requirement. I know that some cities and other counties have passed ordinances, or maybe charter ordinances, to try to deal with opting out of the county-wide requirement. So we have to, up to the commission whether there's consensus. For me to do the research, I guess, is the first threshold question, to let you know what your options are. And then obviously, if you take the discussion, you're going to choose.
So that was, I guess, my ask, was a consensus to ask him to do the research necessary for that.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm certainly in favor of that. I think any time a citizen reaches out with some concerns, I think we should investigate it, for sure. So I'm, I'm in favor of giving Blaine that consensus. Commissioners? Appreciate it, thank you.
That's it.
Alright, Mayor Proketsky, no?
No report.
I have no report either. I'll move us on to our announcements. We are canceled September 5th because of Labor Day. September 7th, we have our regular meeting at 7:00 PM, and a study session at 4:00 PM September 12th. Anything else to come before us tonight?